Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough to order tonight, December 1st, 2014. We have a quorum, but we are a little lightly represented tonight. We have one member who's under the weather, and we have one member out of town. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Lord and Mrs. Bellinger for ensuring that we had a quorum tonight, and we'll proceed as normal. So with that, we'll recognize any visitors who would like to be heard from this evening. That's how we always start. And then we have three sets of minutes that we need to approve. We have an exciting teaching and learning highlight around the subject of woodworking and home repair. We have the pleasure, as always, of accepting a donation. We're then going to hear about a new and exciting program from the YMCA, and we're thrilled to have some guests here who are going to join us at that part in the agenda. We will get a school safety update following that. We will take a look at approving Foxborough High School overnight travel. And then I know the policy subcommittee's been busy working on some updated policies, which is one of the most important things we do as a committee, so I want to thank Tina and Bevy for that. We'll have the first reading of some new policies, and then we'll entertain any other matters. So that's our agenda tonight, and I'd like to begin by welcoming any visitors who'd like to speak. Come on up, Mr. Feldman.
It's weird on this side.[96.04][96.04](Laughter).
Thank you for taking the time out of your meeting to listen to what I have to say. I'm here for two reasons, I guess. One is to ask permission to build dugouts for the new baseball and softball fields located behind the high school. And number two, to have the school committee accept these dugouts as a gift on behalf of the Booster Program. These dugouts will be financed and built through the Booster Program, through donations. We actually do have the majority of the funding already in place, so we're looking for permission to actually build these. I provided you with a rendering of what the dugouts will look like in a small architectural They are enclosed dugouts. The dugouts on the third base side will be open. The dugouts on the first base side will contain a storage component for L-screens, baseballs, tarps, and what have you, to help satisfy what the needs are because of the distance from the school. So with that...
Dave, that's a very generous offer. Can you give us a little bit of background behind the thinking of the boosters in terms of the dugout design and request?
Well, with the new fields, we noticed that there was no dugouts provided for protection of the players from the rain. And because most of the games, or the majority of the games, start in March and April, we thought having an enclosed dugout, keep them out of the cold wind, would be a benefit to the players. So, you know, being around baseball for the last 40 years, around baseball fields through college and up until my mid-30s, this is what a real baseball field should have, real enclosed dugouts for the players, someplace where they can go and sit and kind of get out of the distractions of the girlfriends and the parents and the crowd, just someplace where they can, you know, hang their stuff and enjoy the game, watch the game and concentrate on what they're doing.
It's a generous offer. Any questions for Mr. Feldman?
When would you commence construction?
We may start right before Christmas if the weather holds out.
It continues to be 60 degrees outside.
Based on what happened last week, which was more reminiscent of January, we'll have to play the weather by year. We're ready to go. We have a group of volunteers ready to start construction, so we'll just play the weather by year and, you know, hopefully get them built before the season starts.
I feel like we just watched that movie Field of Dreams, that famous baseball movie, and wasn't that the quote, "If you build it, they will come"?
They will come.[292.58][292.58](Laughter).
If I could do that in my backyard, I would.
So if people could just think about the turf field in the same way, that'd be great. So, because we have some more pieces there, but this is, I think this is a great idea. I think that, I agree, I think we usually do have shelter at a baseball field in most locations. It's not really something that we had been able to put into our plans for the immediate future, so if someone else wants to come along and add to what we started, you know, that just shows, I think, what our community's all about. So, thank you very much.
A lot of hard work on behalf of the Booster. It's a lot of fundraising.
Well, the Boosters are committed to, you know, really providing, you know, a top-notch field for the kids to play at, so whatever we can do to help, we're ready to do it.
Do we need one motion or two motions for that?
We can take it as two. Bevy, any thoughts before we motion?
Take it. Two to accept.
One to approve the dugout design and second to accept the donation.
Oh, oh, second to accept, alright.
From the Booster Club. Any, I don't know, Bevy, if you had anything you wanted to add? I just wanted to ask Bill, since Bill's our facility's head guru, if, any comments or thoughts, Bill, any concerns from your perspective?
Dave and I talked earlier, my only, I have two concerns about the design, and I do understand the concept behind creating protection, but based on their locations, I think they're, the one issue I have, and the reason a lot of our dugouts around town are open right now, is because of the ability to conceal. So, we are creating an area that has a blockage and a wall, and Dave's right, these are so far away that it's not going to be like anybody's going to go patrol them. And then the other side of it, with an enclosed dugout, the one thing that we'll have to be very vigilant on is any kind of damage from graffiti or things like that that could really detract from it. I think it's a great, I'm, you know, I'm very appreciative that they're doing it, but those, you know, honestly are my two concerns, so.
Dave, does this include, I know our preliminary discussions had the one that, whichever one was facing, the way that the end, where the storage kind of is, would be blocking visual sight from, say, the driveway?
That would be on, that would be on the first base side, so you're looking straight on into the dugout.
Okay.
The one where you're seeing lengthwise on the third base side would be open.
So, that one would be open, so that you could just see straight down the line?
You can see right through it.
Okay.
So you actually, you actually could see, you can't see, not be able to see behind the enclosed dugout, but you're going to be able to see into the dugout from the driveway?
Right, right. So you'll have a clear view into the dugout from wherever you are in the...
On just one of them or both of them?
From both of them. The storage area that you see in the drawing will only be on the first base side. It won't be on the third base side, so you won't be able to see, because if we built the storage, you wouldn't be able to see into the dugout from the driveway.
Right.
So we're going to leave the third base side open, so you can see right through it.
I just wanted to clarify that, because that was something that we discussed, that I know was discussed with the group.
Yeah, Bill and I had talked about that, and we decided, instead of building two storage areas, we would just do the one.
Bill, is your concern strong enough or such that you want us to think through this before we make a motion?
No, I, you know, again, I think the, unfortunately, the risk of vandalism is there, and it may just mean that whatever, I think you said you're going to start with a texture 111 exterior. Is it going to be painted?
Yes.
So we'll just have to keep extra paint.
Keep extra paint.
But if you want to, we can wait and approve at the next meeting, because we, we as in we didn't have this an agenda item, we actually didn't know this was going to happen to the visitors.
That was going to be my next question.
No, we didn't know.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, yeah.
So, I, we had had preliminary discussions about the design and their willingness to alter it for visual sighting, but we, Bill and I did not actually know this was going to be tonight, so I certainly don't mind just taking a breather and just giving us a couple of weeks to work with you and think through the rest of it that maybe we hadn't had the chance to. If that's...
I mean, I understand what it is. Like I said, it's to achieve what they're trying to achieve as far as the enclosure and the protection from the elements, it is the only way you're going to be able to achieve that. The, so I don't think that's going to be the concept that you change. The question of how we monitor it and maintain it, like any part of our buildings, is a concern. Obviously, it's one of the things we look at all over the place, so, you know...
And the Booster, is the Booster Club ready to repaint?
Absolutely. Good, good spring training. Give the brushes to the players.
Well, I mean, I don't know what waiting does, I guess, unless they've changed the design, so...
That's why I'm asking, because we had some early discussions, but I didn't know it was going to be for a vote tonight, so I just, I don't have any other questions right now, but I just don't know if tomorrow or the next day I'll think of something, had I known, you know, I don't know.
Well, can we vote tonight? I'm sorry, Booster, I'm just jumping in. Because this is not, was not an agenda item, and it's being brought up at the visitors' portion, we can't?
Sure, we can always make a motion and vote. Dave, does it set you guys back significantly if we wait until our next meeting and just give it a little time to...
No, just, you know, we do want to order materials, get materials ready to go and take advantage of weather.
Yeah.
The only thing, you know, if it snows, it's just going to just delay everything, and who knows what the weather's going to be, but if you guys feel more comfortable waiting, that's fine.
You know, I, personally, I think it's a great opportunity, and I really am appreciative of the Booster Club, but I think I'd just as soon give Debbie and Bill just a little more time. I don't know what else is going to come up, but I think in fairness...
Maybe nothing will?
Yeah.
But I think, and we're not, no, we're not going to make you come back either, but I think it would just give us two weeks to have the last, final, cross the Ts, dot the Is, and then, and then just be able to have some more dialogue with you guys, and then we could just, you can vote at the next meeting if you think that's, and not necessarily have a whole other presentation.
That's great.
Just make it a formal item on the agenda.
Great. Well, Dave, anything else?
No, anything else from you?
That you want to say before we let you run?
No, I just, you know, I think this will, this will be a great add to the new fields and really, really bring it up to another level, and I'm sure by including the softball field into this, it'll help that program out as well. Bring it, bring the fields up onto the pile level, some of the nicer fields that you see around the Hockamuck League.
Very exciting.
So...
Great. Well, thank you for coming tonight, introducing the topic, and we'll make sure we make a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the Boosters.
Thank you.
Any other visitors who want to be recognized tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to other minutes, or minutes in general. Regular meeting minutes, November 3rd. I don't know if anybody had any comments?
We did not.
I had, I had one, and it's a, it's a knit, as always, but on page three, under the baseline and benchmarks update that Amy led us through, I would like to propose in the final paragraph, that's kind of a summary of how we did, just that we add the word "average" after the word "state," so we say, "Overall, the data shows that Foxborough students continue to outperform the state average on all 17 MCAS tests across all grade levels." Just to be a little more clear, is that okay, Amy? Okay?
Yep.
I'm glad you brought that line up. I had it highlighted to make sure it was repeated, because I think that's excellent.
It is excellent.
And thank you to all our hardworking department heads and teachers to allow that to happen for our students.
So can we get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes, November 3rd, as amended?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Three, zero, thank you. Next minutes are the joint meeting with the selectmen, held on November 10th.
We have one little knit, and I confess, I don't remember how to spell Mr. Gerhart's name, but we've spelled it two different ways, with a T and with a D at the end, so whichever way is correct should be the way we go in under teaching and learning highlights.
Sometimes I save stuff. Well, we certainly will look it up.
It's a T.
It's a T. Yeah, then that's the only...
That's a typo.
That's just a typo, but I like to be precise.
Motion to accept?
I will make that motion.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Three, zero, thank you. And the last one is, you guys had a policy subcommittee meeting on November 14th.
We did. And actually, Bevy, I had one change to our minutes. I think we should change the word "suspensions" to "addressing student discipline," because it's not just suspensions, it's other disciplinary measures as well.
Still, alright, addressing student...
It says suspensions and absences. I think it should say addressing student discipline and absences.
That's fine with me, because it covers all of them.
All of it, yeah.
It's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
As I would recommend that we pass this as amended.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Three, zero. Alright, thank you very much. Teaching and learning highlights.
Yes, my favorite parts of the meeting. I would like to invite Mr. John Arakia up to the visitors' table along with our students. Let's see if I've got all the people who are here correctly. We have Brian Booth.
Hello.
We have Mike Riccio.
This is my student.
We have Kevin Duffy. We have, who am I missing? We have Greg.
Greg.
By ours.
Tyler Vito.
Tyler Vito. Thank you for all coming, for coming tonight. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, correct. So this is, to me, a really exciting teaching and learning highlight, because we talk a lot about hands-on learning and application of what you learn beyond high school, and this is such a great opportunity to see what that really means in real time. So, they've got some, call it wonderful show and tells, but I'm just going to turn it over to them, because I think that what they have to say about the courses that Mr. Arakia offers in home repair and in woodworking are just amazing, so I'm going to let them have all the airtime.
Okay, thank you. First, let me start off by thanking the school committee and the administration, Mr. Uchner, for all you've done in investing money in upgrading our equipment. I really appreciate that. I know my students do as well. It was certainly needed. The courses that I teach are a couple of different levels of woodworking and home repair class, which these gentlemen are in right now. I think it's important that we continue to support the program, just because of the hands-on type of learning. As you know, not everyone's going to go on to college, and you always need that person that's going to do the car repair, or build your deck, or do your plumbing when you have a problem. So, that's what we're trying to instill in our students. We expose them to different careers and the different trades. Hopefully, most of them will go on in some area like that. I know Brian's going into the military when he graduates, a couple other people are going to college, and some are hopefully going into the workforce. So I have a broad spectrum of students. The home repair class that I have is wonderful for all students, it doesn't matter whether they're college-bound or not. We basically teach some home repair skills. We have modules down there, basically small houses that we build. And we had finished doing some basic wiring, so kids will learn how to wire a switch and an outlet. They've installed a ceiling fan already, you learned how to install a doorbell. We'll be getting to some plumbing in the near future. Right now, they're currently doing some drywall work, and they'll learn how to repair and patch drywall. We've done roofing and how to repair roofing, small jobs such as repairing a vacuum cleaner, fixing garbage...
That's a big job.
Fixing garbage disposals, installing door locks, doorknobs. So, I always tell my students the first day of class, this is a course that anyone can use, college-bound or not. We're all going to be living in a house someday, or an apartment, so it's very useful, the things you're going to be learning in there. Some of the things that we brought along today, I know Brian was building a birdhouse for his mom, right? I don't know if you, did you want to say anything about that? The reason behind doing that?
Well, it's just as a, as a small going-away present for my mother when I leave for the military, so she'll have something to remember me by. I know I'm only going to basic training, and I'll be back, not deployed yet, but definitely would not have been able to build that without taking every one of his classes, being a teacher's assistant in every one of his classes, and please, don't get rid of the program. That would make me sad. It really would.
You guys need to spin it around, face us.
Oh, sure.
Spin it around.
Kevin Duffy brought along an Adirondack chair that he's making right now.
The camera needs to pick up all the detail on that birdhouse.
Did we get the chair?
No, that's great. That's just like, that's just fine.
Yeah, that's kind of tough to see. I know, that's, that's alright.
Perfect.
Put it right on the table. I'll have to look around everywhere. That's okay.
We see that front to us, so that camera can see it.
The entrance, yeah, perfect.
It's not the most elaborate birdhouse you've seen.
That's amazing. It's pretty fancy.
Two sides.
Some lucky birds.
You built a duplex.
And it's not only, yeah, it's not, Brian, it's not...
Very nice.
It's not only basic training, because that's going to be one of the hardest things you ever do.
Sure, yes, yes, ma'am.
I promise you that. Enter forewarned.
So what is so, what to you is the most important thing that you learn in these kinds of classes? So I, since you all came, took the time to come, I would love to know that, because we were having this little conversation before the meeting, and I have to say, other than, other than writing and grammar, which has served me all my life, the two things I really, that I still use today that I learned in school were how to sew and run a sewing machine and typing. So, and I certainly always planned to go to college, but those are the two things that are lifelong for me, other than the whole idea of writing and grammar that was drilled into me. But, so what is it about these courses that make it something that kids ought to take, that we ought to continue to offer? What's unique about this that you, that makes you drawn to it?
Well, I think that it's, it's very important, because you will end up using all the things he teaches you in everyday life, no matter what it is. You're going to, at some point, something will break in your house, and you will need to know how to fix it, or you will have to hire somebody to fix it, which could be extremely costly, so.
That's right.
Anybody else?
His class, I teach us how to use a lot of small-hand tools and a lot of big equipment that I didn't even know the names of, how to use before I got to his class. I mean, everyone knows I use a drill or a hammer, but, you know, this year, we're going to be learning how to use a lathe, I'm learning how to use a planer, a surface planer, a jointer, and a drill press, table saw, and it's a lot of hands-on work, and enables your creativity, obviously, you can see by Brian's bird mansion.
The other thing that I'm proud of is that, over the years, we've done, I don't know if I want to say community service work, but things for the school. One of the community service things that we did, well, I guess on two separate occasions. One, I have a student right now, and one graduated two years ago, both junior firefighters. At the time, they asked me, can we build some lockers for the fire department, because we don't have our own lockers to keep our equipment in? And it was great, because they built them, they're using them right now. And what's even better, it didn't cost the school department a dime, because it was all donated, so that was even better. But we've done things around the school. A few years ago, we built a memorial English garden bench for Ms. Petras, who used to teach here, passed away. We've done things in the library, media center, end tables and side tables. We've done things for the PD program, building a cold frame to grow vegetables in during the wintertime, and there's so many things we've done. I think a couple of years ago, we built, I had a student build a guitar rack for Mr. Piper. At the time, he showed me what he wanted to purchase in catalog, and I believe it was seven or $800, and we built it for under $100 for just material. So, we're always doing something around the school to help hopefully someone else. One of the things I contacted principals about was building three dollhouses this year. This is not finished, but I had to bring something down to show you. I wanted to donate a dollhouse to each of the schools to give away to some needy child. I just thought it'd be a good gesture.
That's great.
You know, do something like that.
Yeah.
But my classes are always involved in helping someone else out, and honestly, that gives me a very good feeling that they do that, and I know they feel the same way.
That's great. How many kids do you have, total?
We average around 80 a semester, about that.
That's great.
In all my classes. And I usually have one home repair class, and the rest are woodworking classes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we get involved in quite a few things. Last year, we, I don't know if you had seen it, we had it set up in the media center, that mini golf course, remember that? You worked on that with me?
You're a golf course.
We did that in collaboration with Sue Hutchinson, math teacher, who just retired last year. And she wanted to have her class design something to learn about angles. And they had given us a sketch of the thing, and, you know, Brian did most of the work anyway. We had built this mini golf course. Wasn't it so mini, was it? It was about 16 feet long and 7 feet wide, and we built it in sections, and Mrs. Hutchinson's hope was that it'd be used for future fundraising, so, you know, we had, that's another thing that we had done, but every year, there's, there's always a new challenge.
So because you all have parents who are very proud of you, and you took the time to come, I want to hear at least one thing from each of those of you we haven't heard from.
Who has the chair over there?
This is Kevin's.
The chair is beautiful. You want to tell us about your chair?
Yeah, I made it out of cedar wood. I decided to make an Adirondack chair, because my parents got two, and I wanted myself, I wanted one for myself, because it's very comfortable.
It looks like a great chair.
Yeah. And I was going to paint it blue, and I wrote in the Warriors part to remember Foxborough.
Very good.
I'm personally not in any of the woodworking classes, I'm in the home tech class, but that class is beyond helpful. That teaches all about houses and wiring, circuits.
Could, could you move the...
Oh.
Oh, yes. Now it's a sheet.
Yeah, so that teaches all about, like, general stuff around your home, how to fix stuff, hands-on, using tools, that has definitely been a huge help. I'm able to, like, repair stuff, fix stuff on my own now.
Invaluable. And gentlemen?
Even, I'm in the home tech repair class, and even just the simple stuff like learning how to fix a vacuum, everybody's pretty much going to need to know how to do that, unless you have a maid or something, which I do not, so.
You know, one of the things we talk about, guys, on the school committee, is trying to offer educational opportunities for all different types of students in all different types of areas, and I think you made the comment, please don't take this away. I don't think there's any intent of even contemplating that.
Considering, yeah.
In fact, you've invested more in it.
Yeah, the superintendent says, in fact, we've invested more in it. No, you guys, we, this is one of the courses I wish I had taken.
I gotta get my freshman son in this class.
I don't know if my husband's watching at home, but I wish my husband had taken. Anyway, it's the best thing that ever happened to me, but, you know, he didn't grow up around a handy person, and I think that, so, even more so, you know?
It just sounds like a great class, all of the classes.
So last, do you have anything to say?
The educational, you were talking about the educational opportunities that we do. I think it's for like the past four years now, we've been doing Construction Career Day, and we've been working in collaboration with Mr. DeBona for Arcad and Regular CAD, and we've been placed first in three of them, and second in one last one. And I went to, I went to the last one we had last year, and like, all the other schools did not even compare to the capability that we did. It was, our project was amazing. I mean, Booth did a lot of work on it, and...
So did Mike.
And Mike, yeah, yeah, Mike obviously did a lot of work, and it was to make a model bridge and exit and on-ramp to an Olympic gate for the Summer Olympics, and it was just great, because we used Architectural CAD and learned, it helped us use the computers and engineering, and we, Mr. Ray put it, in his classes, put it all together, and just really made an amazing project.
You guys come and show that off every year, we always look forward to that, and so we need you to come again and show us what you're doing this year.
Thank you.
And I know that, I know we begin this at the middle school, even, I know Mr. Spears in the audience back there, we've had him come and introduce trades to the middle school students, and now what we'll have to do is tell those middle school students, when you get to the high school, we've got the class for you, or the classes for you.
We flooded a bunch of kids.
This is a great night to have that on.
I know Mrs. Myers-Packe wanted to chime in.
I did, I just wanted to say one thing. First of all, I love, this is an escape class for me to go to, to come down to see these classes, and we did try to get the house down here, but I was going to have to take a door out. And, um, we did try to get the house down here, but I was gonna have to take a door out. We got it down to the down. And, uh, Mr. Orecia really does downplay, um, how much he really does contribute and, and how much of an emphasis he really does put on that, um, on the community piece and that giving back. But I think you heard it loud and clear from these gentlemen as well, um, that that's something that's so important. And I did just want to let you know that there are ladies in the classes as well.
Absolutely.
I have so witnessed.
You know, couldn't be happier about that as well.
So ladies, you need to turn out for the home repair. I should say, I wish maybe I had taken that. So let me take that upon myself a little bit.
And the projects are fantastic. I mean, this is only just a taste of what does go on. So, um, the individual projects that these students work on, both for home and for school and for the community are, are really quite spectacular. So we're very proud of all they'll do.
That's great. Thank you.
What I love about this, we start, as you know, uh, most of the students would know, um, we, and I don't know if the audience knows, we, this is our fourth year of starting every single school committee meeting with either students and/or teachers or students and teachers together, um, for a teaching and learning highlight, something great that kids are doing or the teachers are doing in the school. We haven't missed a meeting yet, but this one really is a little bit near and dear to my heart because my father built the house by hand that I grew up in. So this reminds me of him, so thanks.
Nice. Debbie Tina?
I'm just so impressed. I, I, I can't wait to go home and talk to my son about taking the home repair class because I think it would be fabulous, but I, this, thank you for coming and sharing your experiences and showing us your projects and, yeah, I think I'd like to take a tour of the house module sometimes. That'd be great.
Oh, that'll be great.
That would be fun.
I just keep my hands to myself because there's saws and dangerous.
Dad, I would do it.
I kind of walk in like.
It's time for me to go back to high school.
Thank you all so much. Keep up the good work.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
Oh, while you're still in the room, actually, um, we're about to accept your donation, tell Mr. Orecia.
Oh.
So may I, may I just really quickly go to that because it's the, it's the, I totally, I just woke up. I just woke up. So, um, the next item, kind of chair, person, um, garden, is that, um, we would like to accept a donation. I think hopefully he'll come back in, um, from Chase Building Supply.
I got him.
Mr. Steve Flattery, who is donating, who is donating one thousand three hundred dollars worth of stains and polyurethanes to the woodworking program at Foxborough High School. And, uh, we want to accept the donation from Chase Building Supply.
Oh, thank you.
I put it on right after you and then just realized I was letting you leave the room. And I, that, that will go a long way towards supporting the program we just heard from. So just, so you're in, not five seconds out of the room.
Thank you again to Chase Building Supply.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this donation.
And I will second that motion.
If Steve were here, he would say with gratitude.
With gratitude.
Very much so.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Flattery from Chase Building Supply. Sorry, I didn't think that.
I forgot. I moved, we usually do donations at the end of the night, and I moved it up to do it while they were still in the room and just blanked out.
Okay, I know we have an exciting item on the agenda now.
We really do. So I would like to invite, um, Mr. Ed Hurley, Mr. Patrick Murphy, Mr. Greg Spear, who are representing the Hockamuck Area YMCA. Ed is the president of the Hockamuck Area YMCA.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy is the branch executive of our Fox, Inventus Foxborough branch. And Mr. Greg Spear is on the Hockamuck Y Board of Directors, and he's also a Foxborough resident. I feel that, you know, these are our business meetings, as you people all know. But I feel like every meeting, there's good news at every meeting, something great that's happening in the schools that's new or exciting at, at every single meeting. And, um, the Y is, is making this meeting no exception to that rule. And I'm just going to turn it right over to them to talk about an exciting new program called Splash. But I, I just have to preface it by saying the Y is the gift that keeps on giving. I don't know how else to think about them. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ed Hurley for the good news.
Well, thank you very much, Devin. It's great to be back here again, uh, in front of the school committee and to share some exciting news with all of you, um, tonight. Just a couple of quick comments before we start. Uh, you know, we're on, uh, continue to be honored to be part of this community. And our Foxborough branch, um, you know, continues to, we think, do some great things in the community, and we do it working with others. And one of our great partners has been and continues to be, um, the Foxborough Public Schools. And, uh, so I want to thank you for, for being such a great partner with us and allow us to do some of the things that we're doing in the community. And, uh, you know, one of the great things about Foxborough, since we opened our branch here, is the way we've been received by everyone in the town. And, you know, one family in particular, a lot of folks stepped up and helped to make the dream a reality to bring the Y to Foxborough. But one family that many of you know well is the Spear family. And, um, they're well-known in Foxborough. They're very proud to be part of Foxborough. And we've been honored to have them as, as very good friends and benefactors to our YMCA. And our indoor pool and the outdoor pool at our, at our Inventus Foxborough branch carries the Spear family name. And you talked about the Y is the gift that keeps giving. I can tell you the Spears keep giving as well. And before we get into the specifics about this program, um, just so folks know what we are talking about, and I know the information, information has been shared with all of you. But, um, we've got, we think, a great opportunity to work collaboratively with the Foxborough Public Schools through the generosity of the Spear family to be able to provide free swim lessons for all first and second grade students in Foxborough Public Schools. And, uh, we'll be doing this as a pilot program starting in January. And before we talk...
And just repeat it. Just repeat what you just said. We've got a couple of people behind you listening.
Okay. Um, through the generosity of the Spear family, um, the latest thing that we've been able to come to, come to together is to create a program where every first and second grade student in Foxborough Public Schools will receive free swim lessons at our Foxborough YMCA. And, um, you know, we think every young person is at risk if they don't know how to swim. So the impact of this is something that we think will be, uh, you know, felt for future generations. And before we get into the specifics and the logistics of how this will work, um, I want to turn it over to Greg Spear, who is with us tonight. And as you said, that, been a longtime member of our Board of Directors, and the Spear family has certainly had an impact on our YMCA and on the community at Foxborough. But I want Greg to just be able to share for all of you, you know, what the motivation was and the thinking was of the family, um, to make this, you know, very generous gift available.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for allowing us to come in tonight. Uh, just a little background, um, our family, um, is an immigrant family. Uh, my, uh, mother came over before World War II, and my father came over after World War II. And, um, what's interesting is my mom was given an opportunity, they were living in New York, uh, in the Bronx, and was given an opportunity to, uh, have swim lessons, uh, through, actually, it was a rotary scholarship to go to a Y camp to learn to swim. So, um, it, it, uh, is always something that's been, uh, a safety issue in our family to have aquatic safety. And my father, uh, grew up in Holland, and in Holland, um, when you start school because of all the dykes, it was mandatory that all kids in, in, uh, when they started first grade, all the way through, um, their, uh, I think through their intermediate school, uh, were required to have swim lessons. So it kind of comes full circle now that when we first started to, uh, review, uh, our commitment to the Y to build the indoor pool, uh, and saw what a fabulous, uh, facility that was gonna be, that our family stepped up and really wanted to make a significant donation. And the same thing happened again with the outdoor pool. So it's kind of coming full circle, and we've been working with the Y to come up with a program almost for a year now in the planning stages, trying to come up with, how could we present this? And, and rather than just kind of do it on the Y, that we could collaborate with the Foxborough school system to be able to have it be kind of a town-wide program and, um, to at least start with first and second graders to get them, uh, started with a, uh, you know, obviously, they're not gonna be, uh, but, you know, avid swimmers, but to start with a safety program to really, uh, make an impact on the community. Uh, we did something similar when we were trying to, um, when the pool was first built. We worked with the school system to start a, uh, the first-year funding of an intermural, um, program for, uh, uh, the swim team. And now it's a regular, you know, uh, sport. So we're very excited to continue and we felt it was a real way to impact it, starting at early age. And when I was talking to, uh, my daddy, he's like, so you think the swim team will get better? I said, you know, uh, they've been doing a great job, but it's interesting to get, you know, both, uh, male and females in, involved in, in, uh, the part of it. So we have a, a good program, uh, set up with the Y that we feel very excited about. And we're so excited to start it through the schools because we feel that will have the biggest impact at the largest, uh, you know, level to try to get people to be involved. So for people that don't know my, my parents, you know, I called them, uh, over Thanksgiving and asked them if they wanted me to read anything. And for people that weren't at the dedication, at least at the outdoor pool and the indoor pool, my mother, who is now eighty-six, jumped into the pool fully clothed. So she's, uh, very avid about that and...
It's one of my favorite memories.
Oh, yeah.
I al, I almost got up off the bench and jumped in after her because she was so inspiring.
She was, she's very inspiring, and so she's so committed to it, as well as my dad. But actually, my mom's in the pool a little bit more than my dad. So this is, um, uh, from my father, uh, who said, "Everyone in my family believes strongly in building a bright future for children. My wife Sonia and our children Greg and Kathy could not be more proud of our association with the Hockamuck Area YMCA and the Foxborough School Department and for what the Y has been able to provide children, families, and our community. Providing swim lessons to all first and second graders is a natural progression of the same family commitment to youth and families in Foxborough." So that was from Alex. And, uh, my mother Sonia echoed similar comments. Swimming is something that I think all children need to learn so they can begin a lifetime of safety and enjoyment in the water. I learned to swim at a YMCA pool as a child and continue to use the Y indoor pool today. Our family feels blessed that we can provide those same experiences for the, uh, kids who will benefit from a Y swim lesson in our Splash program. And, um, I'm not sure if people are aware that the Splash, we tried to work on a catchy name, and I think there's gonna be T-shirts or towels. And the Splash program, um, is, uh, the Spear program for lifelong aquatic. And the Splash comes from, um, uh, Spear Program for Lifelong Aquatic Safety and Health. That's where we came up with the Splash, so.
Excellent. I chuckled when I, I thought.
Yeah, we were trying to do it, and we'll have some, some Splash, uh, you know, things available for all the participants so they can at least remember to, you know, come back to the Y to continue with their swimming commitment. So, um, you know, we're proud as a Spear family to work with the Hockamuck, uh, Y with children and families. We believe strongly that families need a place to be active together. And the indoor and outdoor pools, where family activities combined with those free swim lessons will be a great addition to our community. And we're so, uh, part, uh, excited to be part of it with a collaboration between the two. So, um, it's been exciting. I was just asking what, uh, Ed, before I said, "How old is the indoor pool?" I kind of forget it. It's roughly six years old. And, uh, the outdoor pool now is like three years old. So this seems like a nice program to be able to give back.
I think Splash is highly appropriate because that's exactly what beginner swimmers all do. And I, I, I am particularly sensitive to what you were saying. For first is providing opportunities for each child to understand water safety. I was brought up around water, and that was always the first thing before we could go near the water that was taught and stressed. Because a child knows how to swim does not guarantee that that child will not drown. So the fact that you have emphasized to understand water safety as your priority in all of this, I really appreciate.
Oh, thank you. Right, and it's a, it's a great, uh, effort. I think years ago, you know, I was laughing with my wife Kathy that, you know, I learned, we learned to swim at, at Lakeview. That was where the town had swim lessons right along Lakeview. And so it was something, I'm not even sure if it was handled through the rec department or who actually handled it. So kind of the Y is working now to, you know, provide it and now it gives an opportunity. And this is, you know, we have no idea how many kids are gonna be coming to do it. Uh, it's kind of a prototype program that we're working, you know, with the Y and hope to be able to roll it out elsewhere as well, so.
It's got some great features in there, like, like if the, um, after the initial swimming lessons or, or segment is over that you, as you do for so many, all your other programs, you'll provide scholarships for kids who want to continue whose families, whose families might not be able to afford it. So you've got a lot of really great built-in features, and it's well, really well thought out.
Yeah, we don't want this to just be an eight-week or seven-week program for kids. If there's kids that want to continue on, as Deb just said, you know, we will provide confidential scholarship. We'll, like, help, working with the schools, identify those young people, um, while they're taking classes so we can get them to seamlessly, you know, continue on. And again, this is clearly something that will be available for both, um, you know, Y members and folks that are not members of our YMCA. And, um, you know, we're really excited about it. And, and to your point, it is about water safety. Um, we are hoping that kids will get more acclimated to the water and it will lead to, you know, a lifetime of enjoyment. I mean, the statistics are pretty staggering in terms of, you know, the number of young people and, you know, aside from car accidents. Our insurance company provide us with information that, you know, drowning is the number one, is the number two cause of, um, you know, unintentional death among kids under fourteen.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Number two?
Number two besides car accidents, you know, it's like, boom.
I would not have guessed that.
And then, you know, seventy-five percent, and there was another, another stat, I think it was seventy-five percent of, um, you know, the drownings and near drownings, you know, happen in shallow water as well. So it's not just in the deep end. So that's why, you know, the, this whole thing, and the Spear family, you know, they believe in, you know, the importance of water safety. They also believe in giving back to the community. Um, I also want to mention, you know, Patrick Murphy, who's our, you know, branch executive here. You know, he and his, you know, staff team will be the ones that will make this happen. Um, you know, for the, for the principals of the elementary schools, we were talking earlier, this will be seamless for them. We'll provide all the information, um, the certificates, the information about the program, how folks register. And, you know, the schools will distribute it to the kids, and then we will, you know, we will make sure that all the registration happens and they're in the programs. And Greg mentioned, there'll be a, you know, little gift for all of them, a, a towel that we'll give them. Um, it's kind of a keepsake as well. And we'll stagger it so that, um, you know, we'll start with one school in January, and then the next, um, for the two spring sessions, we'll have the other two schools come, continue into the summer so that kids, you know, whatever's convenient for them, you know, they'll have an opportunity to participate. And then, uh, you know, we will also mention in there, we, we want to report back because we want to be able to, you know, measure our successes and the impact that we're having. So there's some measurements that we've developed that we'll report back to you, um, you know, over the next several months and certainly when the program is over and all the kids have gone through it.
Ed, I know our three elementary principals are here in support of the program tonight, and I, I'm always appreciative of how supportive they are. I don't know if they wanted to say anything along the lines of the program, or you guys are good. Either way, it's okay.
It's echoing the committee. We're excited.
Come on up, people. I like how that happened.
We're very excited, as the committee mentioned. Um, so not only just continuing this great partnership with the YMCA, the Spear family, uh, but to give our children the opportunity for the safety piece, uh, but then also to give them a great lifelong lessons around just how to be healthy, how to have some enjoyment in the water, as was mentioned by the parents. Um, but we're, we're very excited. I was speaking with the superintendent today about just sharing this message with our school council and PTOs this week and getting the message out to all of our families from each of our schools. So thank you again.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rieger.
And for people that... A few short conversations to our two shy or perhaps just wise principals who will like to... But we made just, uh, this is what's great about the Y. We, they set up the whole thing. We just have to make one decision, which is what school are we gonna start with? So, uh, Ed and I had a very brief conversation, and we decided to start with the largest school, which is the IGO, because the more kids we can get in the beginning will generate interest, and the snowball will start rolling a little bit faster. So we're gonna start with the IGO, and then shortly after that, uh, as you can read in the proposal, fold in the other two schools so that by the time school lets out, all families of children in first and second grade will have that opportunity. So it's pretty exciting and...
No, thank you.
Fully delivered.
Does this happen during the school day, uh, as a group? Is this something that happens?
No.
That's a good question.
Yeah, well, that was my question too, because this is a wonderful generous offer, but I was just trying to wrap my brain around the logistics of first and second graders and how this was all gonna happen.
They'll be able to register, again, whenever it's convenient for them. But it will not be during school hours. It'll be part of our regular swim lessons, you know, at the Y.
So their own parents would bring them to the swim lessons. They, but they're being generously provided with the opportunity, thanks to Mr. Spear and the Y. That's wonderful. And it's optional. If a child was a reluctant first grader and didn't choose to swim, they wouldn't have to.
Certainly we encourage them, especially those that are reluctant, because that's what the program is really about to try to get them, you know...
I had a reluctant swimmer. I understand. But it's, sometimes you can lead a kid to water, but you can't...
Well, that's why the, the Y is so great with the swim lessons. They really try, and they have even small groups and, you know, that, uh, can help with special, you know, type needs. And also through some of the integration initiative work that we're doing, that, you know, it's open to all kids. You know, that, that's a really try, and the pool is set up specifically for that, so.
Well, my reluctant swimmer went all the way through the Y. He has a swimming merit badge now, so he's all good, but...
Actually, both of my children went to swim at the Y. And I had one that would jump right in, and the one that was the neck clinger. And she, due to the good graces of the patients of the instructors at the Y, is a great swimmer today. So thanks.
And this will be one of the, you know, we will want to be working with, with, with the principals and with the teachers of first and second graders to get feedback from them in terms of things that we can do moving forward to make it, you know, make it easier, to do the messaging a little bit better. But, um, you know, we're just, we're really excited about this opportunity and think it can, again, not just now, but long-term, have a significant impact on, on some young people, and as they become adults. And, um, again, I'd like to publicly thank, again, the schools for your willingness to partner with us and to the Spear family for stepping up yet again, you know, to make a difference in their hometown of Foxborough.
No, it's really us who should thank you, Ed and Greg and Patrick. I mean, uh, I just sit here and think about, you know, the prior presentation around woodworking and home repair and life skills, and then come to this and think about, you know, what you're making available. I mean, how many, how many small suburban school districts of twenty-seven hundred-plus kids are gonna offer free swimming lessons to every first grader and second grader? I mean, the richness of the offerings that we have in this town, and the rich, and it comes from the people, obviously. Um, and Ed, you've been here over and over again. Uh, Greg, you, you and your family are involved and give back. And Patrick, you make it all happen. I mean, it's, uh, we, we should be thanking you, so it's outstanding.
Thanks, and we'll be back to share the successes and, and Booth, if you do, you know, develop that, uh, program on woodworking and, and home repair for adults.
That'd be a great adult ed class, so.
Can you do it through the Y, Patrick?
Absolutely. Let's go.
No, that, thank you very much.
It's an unbelievably generous program. I mean, I, I feel like I'm never quite finished, you know, thanking them for the last thing that they've done. I mean, I feel like I'm never quite finished, you know, thanking them for the last thing that they've done. I feel like I still, there's more recognition we should be doing and they come with another program. So, I feel like I'm always behind with the appreciation, the gratitude and the thank you, but it's just amazing. And I'm glad you asked him to repeat in the beginning because when he said on the phone what it was, I said, "Could you say that again? Like free swimming lessons for that many kids?" So, I had to ask for a repeat myself.
I noticed that the reporter in the back of the room wanted to get the quote just right, so I wanted to make sure that he and I heard it again, but it's, it's, you know, it's everything we would have hoped for, you know, in the Foxborough schools. When we talk about the richness of offerings, it's just terrific and it's thanks to people like you.
My question is, are you going to, I know you've sent wonderful people over. Caitlin has come over and talked to the elementary students. Are you going to send people to the schools to talk to them about the swimming lessons and the importance of water safety in the wellness classes?
We haven't, we haven't talked about that, but that's, you know, again, whatever, you know, the school staff think would be most helpful in terms of messaging, getting it out. It's easy for me to say, right, Patrick? We're happy to do anything like that.
We have plenty of staff that'd be happy to do that.
Well, I know anytime any of the wonderful staff members from the Y have come over, they've gotten the kids enthused about walking to school, about nutrition detectives. They come home saying, "I want to do this. Give me some vegetables." So, it's great. It's great. So, we want them to come home saying, "I want to swim," right?
That's not a bad idea, actually. Because when it's somebody new that they aren't used to seeing in school, it comes in and is excited about something, it does stick. So, I see a few principals nodding.
I love it. And Greg, you, Greg, you mentioned the exuberance of your mother at the opening of the indoor pool, but if memory serves me correctly, there was a gentleman who, who copycatted that same exuberance at the opening of the outdoor swimming pool.
That's it. The whole family kind of went in.
A little family exuberance.
I actually think your father jumped before your mother.
I think, I don't know. I think my mom was probably the first one. She was like, "Give me your cellphone." So, but it's all good. They're very excited and it was something that you were trying to figure out, how can we, you know, get to that next level? And it's been open, but I think by having the word "free" associated with it, hopefully, people take us up on it. That was one of the things that we worked out with the Y. It's like, we don't know, you know, how many kids are coming? I mean, we hope all, what'd you say, twenty-seven hundred?
That's total.
That's total. So, what is-
That's not first and second grader.
No, what's first and second grader? How many?
Probably about three fifty to four hundred, close to four hundred.
That's great. So, that works out real well.
Please thank your parents.
Oh, well, they'll be, they'll be-
Tell them in their honor. I'm sure the principals would be happy to be dunked by the first and second grader.
Well, Mike is in the dunk. Do you guys do the dunk tank? I've seen Mikes have to be dunked. In a tie. He wears a tie.
Yeah, that's perfect.
He can jump in wearing it.
But, well, thank you so much for your, thank you.
We're doing it. We're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is great.
All right, school safety update.
Speaking of another great partnership, I would like to introduce Chief Ed O'Leary from the Foxborough Police Department and our wonderful new school resource officer, Frank Azavito. Come on up. Bring another chair with you. So, this is great. We have four of the five principals here. Actually, Mrs. Abrams called me to see if she needed to go and I said, "We, we, our principals are at so many of our meetings." I actually said, "No, because we'll probably need you next time." So, I just have to start by thanking Ed for his support because having a school resource officer is something that we've talked about for a number of years now. And people might recall the good old days when there was a school policing grant that most communities had that provided one or two school resource officers and in Foxborough it was one. And that went away, you know, at least more or about ten years ago, roughly, give or take a year or two. And I think the schools have really felt the loss of that and we really, this was a high priority for us. And thanks to our very supportive police department, Ed put the school resource officer position in his budget thanks to our generous community who voted to approve that. We now, starting in the beginning of this school year, have a school resource officer reinstated and Frank Azavito is our new officer. And he's already brought so much to our school, so I, again, am going to invite the principals to come up and speak about anything. In the memo that I sent you, we had had Chief O'Leary and Officer Azavito at a recent administrative team meeting and we discussed the roles and responsibilities and while it could be almost endless and at the end of it say, "And anything else that should come up," which we've already experienced, actually. His three main areas of responsibility are instituting preventative programs, which I'm sure they're both going to talk about tonight, to reinforce, reinforce positive messages about health and wellness and safety, serve as a resource to staff, students and families when issues or problems arise. That's been in full swing this fall. And also to handle any internal operations through the police department that involves children younger than eighteen. So, I'm going to turn it over to the chief and to Frank and tell us a little bit about our latest venture.
Well, I'd like to thank members of the committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent, certainly the support and encouragement to reinstate the position. Actually, back in the nineteen nineties, Kurt Ludwig was our first youth crisis officer. And over time, as things changed within the department, Bob Ford and then Tim O'Leary took over the reins. And Tim was very active in it for well over seven or eight years. Unfortunately, due to some changes within the department, some key staff leaving, I had to transition Tim into a more investigative role, serving as a detective, and we had the position open. Again, thankful for the support we received from the Board of Selectmen to fund the position, to bring it back to being. And we came about by making that assignment with the help of the school department. It wasn't arbitrary. They were active participants. Several members of the leadership team of the schools participated in some interviews. And as a result of Frank's past experiences, working as a school resource officer primarily in the Ahren in the lower grades, he was selected to take on this role. So, I'm very pleased with the feedback that I'm getting, both from members in the community as well as from the school department and the efforts that he's already made in providing services to school staff, parents and children and hopefully encouraging them with an ounce of prevention to act as good citizens. And Frank is a great role model for that in our community. In fact, one of the initiatives that I know several members of the wellness program went to along with Frank was a new prevention program called Alcohol Literacy. I think that's going to be a great tool for us to get the message out about the dangers of underage drinking. And right now, I'll turn really the basics of the program because Frank, as well as other members of the school staff, took to train the trainer session so that they'll be able to work with the wellness staff in presenting it. So, I'll turn it over to Frank to explain it.
Thank you, chief. Thank you to the committee, Debbie and Abby and Bill and Janet. Appreciate it all for letting you speak. Just a little background on how I got started with my interaction with the schools. In two thousand eight, I was made to DARE officer. And I presented a alcohol awareness program sponsored by Mothers Against Drunk Driving. It was called a Protect You, Protect Me program. And it was geared more towards the fourth and fifth graders. And studies show that a lot of the kids, their first drug that they were abusing was alcohol. So, they were trying to reach out to these kids at a younger age, let them know the dangers of alcohol and the effects of alcohol. And that kind of steamrolled into me meeting some of the teachers in the health program, Mr. Seketti, Mr. Nunes. And as the school year went through, he would invite me into the seventh and eighth grade classes. And it would just start out with simple questions about some of the things I did as a police officer. I would explain some of the tools that I would use as a police officer and it kind of just steamrolled. And I ended up doing visitations in the high school and Mr. Faulkner and Mr. Cummings would allow me to come to the classroom in the civil liberties class. And we would discuss criminal law, case studies, case law, motor vehicle issues, teen drivers, teen drinking, just information that I would pass along to the kids. And it just cemented my relationship with the schools. And then, when I had the opportunity to become the SRO, I was appointed by the chief, the position. And since then, it's only improved my relationship with the members of the schools. And the year so far has gone off without a hitch. I've been involved in a lot of things for the school, like Mrs. Pennelli says, everything and then some. There's been so many issues since the beginning of the year. And like the chief said, I'm also responsible for any issues involving kids seventeen and under. Now that the law has changed where at seventeen now, you no longer consider an adult, you consider juvenile. So, that only increases my workload as far as what happens with, you know, kids getting in trouble and the consequences that they have to face. And not only my liaison between the elementaries, the high school, I also help out with the charter school, which is also in our district. And I am the juvenile court prosecutor and my caseload is definitely, definitely increased since the law changed. And I was able to sit on this, this program called Alcohol Literacy Challenge. And a good program and involved letting us know how much advertising is affecting us. They spend over five billion dollars a year on advertising on alcohol. And in this program, it taught us about how advertising affects us as people when it comes to alcohol. And some of the items in the program, they discussed how, well, when we first came into the class, it was, it was actually a webinar. And the instructor who taught the class pretty much was giving us the background on where this program was started. And one of the first questions he told us was, "What do you think about alcohol? How does alcohol make you feel?" And we've been programmed over the years to watch all these commercials. We see all these commercials about Bud Light, Budweiser and how everything is a big potty. Everything's fun and you never, and you always see beautiful people on TV with all the commercials, which is pretty funny. And then, everything about alcohol is great. And he was going around the class asking us, "Well, what do you think about alcohol? How does that make you feel?" Of course, everybody's, you have fun, you're excited, you're amorous, you like to joke around and it's only good things associated with alcohol. But these ads never tell you the ill effects of alcohol and what it does to you. So, this program is going to open things up for us. As of right now, we don't have a plan in place, but we'll work on implementing a plan. And hopefully, we can get something started. That way, we can interact with the kids on that basis.
Recently saw you doing the Halloween safety program, kindergarten.
Yes, yes. That all came about through the DARE program. That started way back when in two thousand eight when I was doing Halloween safety, nine-one-one safety, protecting, keeping safe program, which was geared more towards first, second, third graders. We also did, part of my job back then was also doing tours of the station. And right now, I'm the official tour guide of the Foxborough Police Station. And we've had most of the first and second graders from the district come in and visit the police station. And we've also made presentations to the Cub Scouts. I've taught fingerprinting classes. And I've also been involved at the Taylor School, reading to first and second graders, which was a reading program, which I had a lot of fun doing. And I think Mr. Regan has me scheduled to do that again this year.
Well, now that there are witnesses.
Yes, yes.
You might be booked a little bit more. I'm glad, I wanted to mention that because I think a lot of people think the role of the officer is really when the kids are older and start making poor decisions, but actually, most of his work is especially eventually going to be front-loaded into prevention work. And the Alcohol Literacy Challenge was on the PD day in October so that everybody had the chance to participate and that we can build our own capacity for continuing to train people by having that full day. So, they were, they were very nice to work with us too. That wasn't their original choice of dates, the Alcohol Literacy Challenge people, but they came around because that was the PD day when we could have people available. So, I think that that's really important to know, that it's from the youngest children all the way to the oldest children and from kids who just want to know a little bit about what our community helpers do in, in the police force is just as important a role as dealing when we have issues that are, that could involve poor decisions, you know, when, when the kids get older. And also developing relationships with kids, I think, is really important. Principals, any other examples of what he does? Oh, Pete's winning tonight.
No, it is, it is the importance of those proactive relationships of where Frank set an opportunity to go into the individual classrooms for the Halloween safety lessons in our kindergarten and first grade classrooms. Our second grade classroom is actually scheduled with Frank during their tour of Foxborough, during the public safety tour, to be with Frank. And it's more of those connections of knowing the police officer and having that relationship. So, as they get older and they're forced with some different choices, our hope is that they make some great choices and they know they can reach out to the police department because they are our friends and they are here. I think back to the chief and when I first met the chief, he was coming into my classrooms here in Foxborough doing the safety lessons.
He was officer friendly.
He was officer friendly at the time.
That's right.
So, it is an important role. And it's with that piece last year, as Frank started doing before he was in this role, of just coming down to do some read-alouts in our classroom and showing that presence of, that our police department is here with us. It's not just in a time of crisis, but that they're here always for us.
And I'll jump in for middle and high school. We too, it's really about that relationship building. We really like to think of it not as much as being, of being preventative. Yes, we'd like it to be preventative rather than being reactive to something that happens. And so, now, you know, Frank comes down to lunches, he'll be down there, kids can, can access him. And I have to say that really, our relationship with the police department and with our SRO has really been about those relationships. And it's been issues that, that students have had with home or with other situations that have taken place that isn't the drugs and the alcohol necessarily, but it's, it's what can I do? And how can we offer resources and how can we point somebody in the right direction and really help them get the help that they need or that their family needs? And so, that's where we see that it's so important. So, we're very, very happy and say thank you so much to the community for really finding this and for the chief as well to be able to reinstate this position. It's just, it's so important, I think, for the kids and to understand that when the police car drives around the building, it's not, "Uh-oh, what happened?" It's a matter that they're here, you know, and, and the officers are here for a positive reason, hopefully, and we'll continue to build it in that direction.
And at the elementary level, when he's in the cafeteria, he's like a rock star.
A rock star in the cafeteria, that's true.
That's probably how the chief sold the position. He's going to be a rock star.
I mean, we've been missing the presence for so many years. And now, with me there, I'm approachable. They see me. It's, it's, instead of the parents saying, "Hey, there's the police officer. If you don't behave, you know, you're going to go to him." Now, it's, it's more of a friendly basis, one-on-one basis. And I've made relationships with the kids here already at the high school. Just the presence itself makes a big difference.
I think you really hit the ground running, Frank, I really do. And for us, the experience of having that consistent person, it's just so important because without that, without someone who's assigned to the youth in, in the community, our police department's always been highly responsive when we need them. They always, they're always there. But without somebody designated as a school resource officer, basically every time we needed whatever it was and it could run the gamut, we're interrupting their day's work, their flow of, of assignments they already had. They have, they're busy. So, you know, it's, it's really been really important for us to know that, that we have the go-to person, that we know, that knows us, that knows the families. Because it just clears out so much of the distraction of having maybe different people respond and say, "This is what's been going on" and trying to catch up. So, I, I just think it's been one of the best things that's happened to us this year.
Very good. Thank you.
Chief, can I just ask you a quick question? You mentioned earlier, thanks to the Board of Selectmen for helping support this. Is this a full-time position that has been added?
You know, we've been able to reinstate it on a full-time basis. And I certainly, you know, from the time that I came up with the concept, you know, we've tried to keep it that way because the demands of the position are significant. It's not a position that you just, you know, do your eight and go home. Frank is also very bashful because he does have educational qualifications, both his bachelor's degree and master's degree. And more importantly, he's gained experience coaching a football team in his own hometown. You know, so he has a great relationship with student athletes as well as the students here in Foxborough. So, he's got a great sense of humor and also an ability to deal with a wide range of people.
Which is important.
Critical.
Thank you, chief.
And even, just to give you a quick update because it says school safety. Last week, no, the week before last, we all went to, we all, a bunch of us went to Norfolk County DA's office, School Safety and Security Summit, which occurs a few times a year. Mrs. Myers-Papple was there from high school, Ms. Sylvia, Sean McIner, athletic, interim athletic director, Frank, Ed, myself. And we go, I typically go with the chief to those, but without a designated person as our glue, if you will, I'll call you the glue now, we go to that, school people and, and police department staff. And then, we're all as sort of as a group responsible for how is all this going to play out? So, we heard sessions on prevention- So we heard sessions on prevention of targeted violence, risk assessment for mental and behavioral health treatments or mental behavior health issues, responding to student threats and dangerous behavior within the constraints of the new Massachusetts laws and regulations and what exists. And, you know, Frank being there with us is the one that's going to really help keep us together on how we respond to those things and, and how we work to prevent some of those things. Because otherwise it's, it's all of us trying to keep our two teams in the loop about some pretty complex things that is not our area of expertise, quite honestly. So I think that, that's an important role that he serves as well.
Anything else, ladies?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think we're very fortunate.
Very fortunate. Thank you both.
Chief, thanks for your continued support. Frank, thank you very much for all you do. Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay, I think we have to get Mrs. Myers-Pacla back to the table again.
Pete's going to speak for him. We just voted back here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks all for coming.
You have before you a list of our overnight travel for the rest of this school year. It's usually presented at this time of year because it, it seems that most of our travel is second semester more so than in the first semester. And the only thing that looks new but really isn't, it's because it doesn't run every year. And that's through the social studies department with the history club. And so they are planning to do a trip to Washington DC in March, but again, that is something that has been done in the past, it's just not an annual event when it does take place. And of course, some of the sporting events are by invitation, so they may or may not occur, similar to Ellington, which again, it's by performance as to whether or not you're invited to that particular event.
What would you say is the largest event in terms of number of students, would you guess? Just thinking through how many students we potentially send off to places.
It's got to be the Festival of Music.
That's what I'm thinking, because the music department winds up, I mean, it's usually three buses that, that head out, two to three buses, and then there's a van with, you know, all of the instruments packed into it as well as the buses as well.
Equipment and logistical things.
So I would say that it is probably the Festival of Music.
Because essentially Ellington's the students who are in the jazz performing groups, but the Festival of Music is really all of our, it's quite, quite a large contingent that...
And all status performance again based, so it just depends upon the number of students who meet the selection for that. And the Student Council Conference is anywhere from twelve to sixteen students, that's the average, sixteen's usually the high side of that. I'm looking here. Again, depending upon a track, it's not necessarily the track team, it's oftentimes like the sprinting team or a particular number, it isn't necessarily all of them the same with...
They went last year to that, didn't they?
Yes.
Yes. They just haven't historically gone like every single year.
It is, and I believe it is again by invitation and by how you, what your times are as far as the invitation.
But we sent students there last year.
And in the future, Diana, will we put the, actually it's, no, the trip we talked about for spring break, the Florida trip, would that appear in, that we would treat that like one of these going forward?
Yes.
And the reason is that here is because we've already covered it.
It's the same thing because you've already, you've seen it, the discussion has occurred and so it just would be added to the list.
And for the benefit, if anyone's interested at home, who can't see this list of eight or nine events that we'll send students to, they're all pretty local, DC I guess being the furthest with the exception of the trip to London.
Yes. And the Florida as well with the cheerleading competition should they go.
If they qualify.
And we've sent students there before, but that's, that's probably the, well, except for London, you're right, that's the farthest.
And the two Spanish and French exchanges are always held separately.
So those are the faraway ones too.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These look like wonderful trips, but I did, I, in light of our new policy on absenteeism, they do encompass a number of school days. So are these excused absences?
They'd fall under, it's a field trip, so it's, it's class beyond the four walls.
It is a school day. Oh, for, okay, so this, this falls as a school day, a field trip.
Yes, absolutely. It does not count among the unknown.
All right, I understand. Okay. I was just, I just wanted to under, yeah, grasp that when we're looking at this, because I, we talked about the importance of being in the classroom and that parents should not be taking their kids on college trips. And you can see where a parent who was taking their very own child to Washington DC the same weekend to do essentially the same kinds of things as the school trip was doing might say, well, why is this excused when mine is not excused? Just, I know, we talked about using discretion and understanding in those situations too, but I just was trying to...
Well, I'll answer that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because if, if a family's going anywhere.
Right.
Whether it's DC or Disney World.
Yep.
We don't vet their itinerary or judge its educational value.
Right.
But we do know if we take students for an educational trip to Washington DC to study government, politics and international relations, then we know, we have vetted the educational component to it.
Component.
And it, and it ties in with their academic learning in their classes. But we don't, we don't have the authority to vet people's vacations and determine educational value. But this does have that.
Understood. Thank you for answering that. My other question was, with the band trip, that does go over to a Monday and Tuesday? So what happens to the students that don't go on the trip when, with their band section?
It's the same as any other...
Substitute?
Substitute that would come in if a teacher was out for any reason or if a particular class of a teachers went off on a field trip and that teacher was not going to be in for the other classes, a sub would be in unless in plans are left.
Fair enough.
No questions for me.
So we have a motion to approve the trips as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve these trips as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, follows in favor? Great.
Great, thank you so much.
Diana, thank you. First reading of policies. What's that smile for?
This is my agenda item and I couldn't be happier, so I will just turn it right over to the policy subcommittee with gratitude, clapping and a big smile on my face.
Well, Belle, do you want to start or shall I?
If you would like to start, but you may need some relief.
I may, I've saved a lot of water. So these...
I've had lots of lozenges before I came tonight.
Bruce, before we start, should I read first and then entertain questions or...
Well, why don't you explain what we're taking, what we're taking a look at?
That's probably a good idea. So these are revisions to our school committee policy manual that have to do with student absences, student exclusion and exemptions from school attendance, and a revised section on student conduct and discipline. And these changes were necessitated by changes to Massachusetts General Law Sections, chapters seventy-one and seventy-six that were effective in July of two thousand fourteen. And they've been recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and also by our School Department Council.
So I probably jumped ship just a little bit too early on, these poor people. But we, we also had, we, we had our, our school committee council, Dan Brown, come to one of our administrative team meetings to go over the new laws and regulations, to make sure we were interpreting them properly, take a look at how we were explaining them in writing, any policy changes that, or information was going to parents as a result. And Tina was able to join us as a member of the policy subcommittee to hear the same message that we were hearing so that we had our policies procedures in alignment. So that was pretty informative and then their work came as a result of that.
And subsequently, Bevy and I met on the fourteenth and after the admin team meeting. And we went through our own policy manual and made sure that our policy conformed to the changes in the law.
So this is our first reading for information purposes. Looks like the last one is the long one, right Tina? So if you need a break, we can jump in and take a turn if it helps.
It is long, but it does, it does track closely to the law and everything in there is necessary. The first is file J H, student absences. Regular and punctual school attendance is essential for success in school. Parents of children attending our schools have the responsibility to ensure that their children attend school regularly in accordance with state law. Students may be excused temporarily from school attendance for the following reasons. One, illness or quarantine. Two, bereavement or serious illness in family. Three, weather so inclement as to endanger the health of the child. Four, for observance of major religious holidays. A child may also be excused for other exceptional reasons with approval of the school administrator. A student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day schoolwork is an important factor in the shaping of his/her character. Parents can help their children by refusing to allow them to miss school needlessly. Accordingly, parents will provide an explanation for the absence or tardiness of a child. This will be required in advance of an absence when possible. In instances of chronic or irregular absence reportedly due to illness, the school administration may request a physician's statement certifying such absences to be justifiable. Student absence notification program. Each principal will notify a student's parent slash guardian within three days of the student's absence in the event the parent guardian has not informed the school of the absence. Each principal or designee shall make a reasonable effort to meet with any student and that student's parent slash guardian who has missed five or more unexcused school days. A school day shall be equal to two or more class periods in the same day in a school year. The meeting shall be to develop action items to improve student attendance and shall be developed jointly by the principal or designee, the student and the student's parent slash guardian. The parties may seek input from other relevant school staff and/or school official, and/or officials from relevant public safety, health and human service, housing and nonprofit agencies. Dropout prevention. Any student who has not graduated from high school will not be considered permanently removed from school unless the principal or, or his/her designee has sent a notice to the student and the student's parent guardian. The notice shall be sent within five days of the tenth consecutive day of absence and shall offer at least two dates and times within the next ten days for an exit interview with the superintendent or designee, the student and the student's parent slash guardian. The notice shall be in both English and the primary language of the home if applicable. The notice shall include contact information for scheduling the exit interview and shall indicate the parties shall reach an agreement on the date time of the interview within the ten-day timeframe. The timeframe may be extended at the request of the parent slash guardian and no extension for the meeting date shall exceed fourteen days. The superintendent or designee may proceed with any interview without a parent guardian present, provided the superintendent has documented a good faith effort to include the parent slash guardian. The superintendent or designee shall convene a team of school staff to participate in the exit interview and shall provide information to the student and, if applicable, the student's parent slash guardian on the detrimental effects of early withdrawal from school, the benefits of earning a high school diploma and the alternative education programs and services available to the student. Legal references, MGL seventy-six one, seventy-six one B, seventy-six sixteen, seventy-six eighteen and seventy-six twenty.
So I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is this entirely new, Tina?
No, it's not entirely new. The paragraphs, the introductory paragraphs, if you will, are currently in our policy. It's, it's the notification and dropout prevention procedures that are required by the changes to the law.
Okay. So they're putting more detail and more responsibility?
Yes. I think the, the legislature wants more accountability for student success in school and more accountability for intervening when absence is creating an academic difficulty or concern, that's even a better word, yes.
And I think the five absence notification is a new requirement. So I think it had been seven previously? Not sure, but that the five is a new trigger.
And in terms of how this relates to our new policy about unexcused absences, I'm sure you've thought through this already and I'm just starting to, but we're consistent with what we adopted.
Exactly, that Diana brought to you, Myers-Pacla. I'd say the paperwork of the notification, I, our principals are already seeing how much work that is. There's a lot more administrative work for notifying parents when absences have reached a threshold. So it's more work on our part, but it does put more onus on the schools to work with the families around issues relating to absence and tardiness.
Right.
So I think it's good for kids.
I think Diana's, the new policy actually was out in front of our school committee policy, so we are consistent with both.
Okay. Okay, I bet, I bet. Our next one is file J H D, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. Denial of admission. Denial of admission means the withholding of the privilege of enrolling in a school of the Foxborough Public Schools. The following shall be the grounds for denial of admission to school or diversion to another appropriate alternative program. Graduation from the twelfth grade of any other school, of any school, or receipt of any document evidencing completion of the equivalent of a secondary curriculum. Failure to meet the requirements of age by a student who has reached the age of six years at a time after beginning of the school year, as fixed by the Foxborough School Committee as provided by the Massachusetts General Laws. Then we are striking, having been expelled during the same year from this district or any district in the Commonwealth. And it will read, not being a resident of the district and the district has opted not to participate in school choice law. Failure to comply with the provisions of the Massachusetts School Entry Immunization Law. Our legal references are MLG seventy-one thirty-seven H, seventy-six twelve, seventy-six twelve A, seventy-six twelve B, and six oh three CMR twenty-six. So the main, yeah, the main thing here is the dropping of that one sentence.
Right, so the listener may wonder why the policy is as it existed except for having dropped the fact that having been expelled during the same school year from this district or another district is, used to be grounds for denial of entry. So in layman's terms, if a school, if a student had been expelled from a neighboring school district or a school district in Western Mass, say for example, for good cause and then wanted to come to school here, we could deny them access based on what, the reason for expulsion in another district. So it's really up to the district whether they want to receive them and enroll them and continue their education under that. The new law, however, requires a district to continue to provide educational services to students who are expelled. So that's no longer a legal reason for us to refuse entry in the pot of a student. So say a student got expelled in Western Mass, the family moved here, and up until this year, we didn't have to take that student. We do, we either do now or they can stay where they are and require that that district pay for educational services. So that is, is part of the new law that is becoming a little bit complex. We don't encounter it often, but that's going to be a real challenge in, in the new law is what do those educational services look like? And to what extent are we obligated to provide them, because we are, but what would that, what would that actually look like? And how much would it cost is a little bit up in the air and it's not a funded mandate, so we're filing, filing this under unfunded mandate. So that's why that is stricken from the reasons for denial of admission to a school.
Because the law is saying...
We cannot any longer deny them based on having been expelled elsewhere.
Would you envision, and I'm glad we don't encounter this real often, but would you envision that these would be educational services that be provided to that student outside of the traditional school environment?
It depends on the violation.
Yeah.
There are going to be instances where we might expel a student, let's say it's our student, and... Let's say it's our student, and the student is a threat to the school environment, in which case it wouldn't be here, but it would certainly be our responsibility now to provide those services where it has not been in the past. If it's not, if it's for a reason where they may not be threatened, it could be something creative involving, it could be virtual, we're not really sure what options are going to be available and who would then monitor that and/or pay for it. So that's definitely on the list, a short list of current concerns of superintendents across the Commonwealth right now.
And that's a segue to the next policy that we need to look at, which is Student Conduct and Discipline, which really deals with the meat of the new changes to Mass General Law, Chapter 71. And that's the biggest one, the requirement that schools continue educational services for students that have been expelled or suspended. And that's our next one. This one's a long one, so bear with me.
And actually, as JIC, we did have our, have one already.
Right.
However, it was totally outdated. This is the new law, so the old one that we had has gone. This is to replace.
Will be entirely replaced.
Will be entirely.
Right, so our one page is now being replaced with six pages because of the law change.
Got it.
That's right.
So you want to start and take a break?
I will start, see how far I get. So this is File J...
We may even want to share it with Bruce.
Well, I'll take a page if it'd be helpful, sure.
Let's see if we can plow right through this. There is a lot here, but I think it's very necessary, and as Bevy pointed out, it replaces in its entirety File JIC, Student Conduct.
And it is still listed as JIC.
It is still JIC. It's File JIC, and we've changed the title, is now Student Conduct and Discipline.
Do you think it might be a good idea, since this is so lengthy, to stop after every, say, two or three sections and see if people have questions or want anything clarified?
Sure.
I'm fine with that. "The school committee believes that all students deserve every opportunity to achieve academic success in a safe, secure learning environment. Good citizenship in schools is based on respect and consideration for the rights of others. Students will be expected to conduct themselves in a way that the rights and privileges of others are not violated. They will be required to respect constituted authority, to conform to school rules, and to those provisions of law that apply to their conduct. Each principal shall include prohibited actions in the student handbook or other publication that is made available to students and parents. Principals and staff shall not use academic punishment of any form as a consequence to inappropriate behaviors/actions by students. The principal may, as a disciplinary measure, remove a student from privileges such as extracurricular activities and attendance at school-sponsored events based on the student's misconduct. Such a removal is not subject to the remainder of this policy, law, or regulation." So in essence, this is, this sort of summarizes the preliminary paragraphs of the previous policy. Suspension. In every case of student misconduct for which suspension may be imposed, a principal shall consider ways to reengage the student in learning and avoid using long-term suspension from school as a consequence until alternatives have been tried. Alternatives may include the use of evidence-based strategies and programs such as mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and positive behavioral interventions and Notice of Suspension. Except for emergency removal or an in-school suspension of less than 10 days, a principal must provide the student and the parent oral and written notice and provide the student an opportunity for a hearing and the parent an opportunity to participate in such hearing before imposing as a consequence, imposing suspension as a consequence for misconduct. The principal shall provide both oral and written notice to the student and parent in English and in the primary language of the home if other than English. The notice shall include (a) the disciplinary offense, (b) the basis for the charge, (c) the potential consequences, including the potential length of the student's suspension, (d) the opportunity for the student to have a hearing with the principal concerning the proposed suspension, including the opportunity to dispute the charges and to present the student's explanation of the alleged incident, and for the parent to attend the hearing, (e) the date, time, and location of the hearing, (f) the right of the student and the student's parent to interpreter services at the hearing if needed to participate, (g) if the student may be placed on long-term suspension following the hearing with the principal (1) the right set forth in 603 CMR 53.083B, and (2) the right to appeal the principal's decision to the superintendent. To conduct a hearing without a parent present, the principal must be able to document reasonable efforts to include the parent. I actually need to go back because I noticed when I began this sentence, we need to strike for an in-school suspension of less than 10 days because we do not have in-school suspension. So it'll just say, except for emergency removal, comma, so I just wanted to get to the end of that.
And that's a local, a lot of high schools do offer in-school suspension, but offer, use in-school suspension, but we do not.
We do not.
Correct, all right. It's either out-of-school suspension.
I've read this now several times, and it didn't pop out at me, but it did just now, so I wanted to make that clear, that we need to strike that. Just good, okay.
Good challenge.
Any questions?
No, that's, I mean, it's delineated perfectly in that paragraph.
Well, and it is directly from the law. I actually have the section of the law here, if you want to take a look at it, and it is, it's just right, right from there. Emergency Removal. A principal may remove a student from school temporarily when a student is charged with a disciplinary offense and the continued presence of the student poses a danger to persons or property or materially and substantially disrupts the order of the school, and, in the principal's judgment, there is no alternative available to alleviate the danger or disruption. The principal shall immediately notify the superintendent or designee in writing of the removal, including a description of the danger or disruption presented by the student. The temporary removal shall not exceed two days following the day of the emergency removal, during which time the principal shall: make immediate and reasonable efforts to orally notify the student and the student's parent of the emergency removal, the reason for the need for the emergency removal, and the other matters required in the notice; provide written notice to the student and parent as required above; provide the student an opportunity for a hearing with the principal that complies with applicable regulations; and the parent an opportunity to attend the hearing before the expiration of the two school days unless an extension of time for hearing is otherwise agreed to by the principal, student, and parent. Render a decision orally on the same day as the hearing and in writing, no later than the following school day, which meets the requirements of applicable law and regulation. A principal shall also ensure adequate provisions have been made for the student's safety and transportation prior to removal. Principal's Hearing. Short-term suspension of up to 10 days. The hearing with the principal shall be to hear and consider information regarding the alleged incident for which the student may be suspended, provide the student an opportunity to dispute the charges, and explain the circumstances surrounding the alleged incident, determine if the student committed the disciplinary offense, and if so, the consequences for the infraction. At a minimum, the principal shall discuss the disciplinary offense, the basis for the charge, and any other pertinent information. The student shall also have an opportunity to present information, including mitigating facts, that the principal should consider in determining whether other remedies and consequences may be appropriate as set forth in law and regulation. The principal shall provide the parent, if present, an opportunity to discuss the student's conduct and offer information, including mitigating circumstances, that the principal should consider in determining consequences for the student. The principal shall, based on the available information, including mitigating circumstances, determine whether the student committed the disciplinary offense, and if so, what remedy or consequence will be imposed. The principal shall notify the student and the parent of the determination and the reasons for it, and if the student is suspended, the type and duration of suspension, and the opportunity to make up assignments in such of their schoolwork as needed to make academic progress during the period of removal, as required by law and regulation. The determination shall be in writing and may be in the form of an update to the original written notice. If the student is in a public preschool program or in grades K through eight, K through three, sorry, the principal shall send a copy of the written determination to the superintendent and explain the reasons for imposing an out-of-school suspension before the short-term suspension takes effect. Principal's Hearing. Long-term suspension of more than 10 days but less than 90 days consecutive or cumulative. The hearing with the principal shall be to hear and consider information regarding the alleged incident for which the student may be suspended, provide the student an opportunity to dispute the charges, and explain the circumstances surrounding the alleged incident, determine if the student committed the disciplinary offense, and if so, the consequences for the infraction. At a minimum, in addition to the rights afforded a student in a short-term suspension hearing, the student shall have the following rights. In advance of the hearing, the opportunity to review the student's record and the documents upon which the principal may rely in making a determination to suspend the student or not; the right to be represented by counsel or a layperson of the student's choice at the student's/parent's expense; the right to produce witnesses on his/her behalf and to present the student's explanation of the alleged incident, but the student may not be compelled to do so; the right to cross-examine witnesses presented by the school district; the right to request that the hearing be recorded by the principal, and to receive a copy of the audio recording upon request. If the student or parent requests an audio recording, the principal shall inform all participants before the hearing that an audio record will be made and a copy will be provided to the student and parent upon request. Do you feel like reading, Bevy?
The principal shall provide the parent, if present, an opportunity to discuss the student's conduct and offer information, including mitigating circumstances, that the principal should consider in determining consequences for the student. The principal shall, based on the evidence, determine whether the student committed the disciplinary offense, and if so, after considering mitigating circumstances and alternatives to suspension as required by law and regulation, what remedy or consequence will be imposed in place of or in addition to a long-term suspension. The principal shall send the written determination to the student and parent by hand delivery, certified mail, first-class mail, email to an address provided by the parent for school communications, or any other method of delivery agreed to by the principal and the parent. If the principal decides to suspend the student, the written determination shall: identify the disciplinary offense, date on which the hearing took place, and the participants at the hearing; set out the key facts and conclusions reached by the principal; identify the length and effective date of the suspension, as well as a date of return to school; include notice of the student's opportunity to receive education services to make academic progress during the period of removal from school as required by law and regulation; inform the student of the right to appeal the principal's decision to the superintendent or designee, but only if the principal has imposed a long-term suspension. Notice of the right of appeal shall be in English and the primary language of the home if other than English, and shall include the following information. The process for appealing the decision, including that the student or parent must file a written notice of appeal with the superintendent within five calendar days of the effective date of the long-term suspension. Provide, within the five calendar days, the student or parent may request and receive from the superintendent an extension of the time for filing the written notice for up to seven additional calendar days, and that the long-term suspension will remain in effect unless and until the superintendent decides to reverse the principal's determination on appeal. If the student is in a public preschool program or in grades K through three, the principal shall send a copy of the written determination to the superintendent and explain the reasons for imposing an out-of-school suspension before the suspension takes effect. I find these quite straightforward. Does anyone have questions up to this point, really?
No, I mean, my observation, and for those still listening at home...
Everyone's asleep in Foxborough right now.
I mean, what it appears is, you know, we are spelling out, or they are spelling out, in much more specific language the process.
Yes, right.
And the roles of the schools to protect the student, to clearly identify what has to happen when. I mean, just comparing it to our old one-pager. Our one-pager was more focused around what rights would get you suspended as opposed to the due diligence process afterwards.
Right.
Right, so there should be no misunderstanding if people read this.
Yeah, but you're right, Bevy, it's clear English, I think.
It's a little redundant in some places, but it's...
Repetitive, right.
Well, and the law requires the redundancy. We went from having Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 37H, to now you have Section 37H, Section 37H and a half, and Section 37H and three quarters.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Okay.
All of which deal with these processes and procedures.
So we're two-thirds of the way through, or so. You guys are doing a great job.
Okay, I can go on a little more here. Superintendent's Hearing. A student who is placed on long-term suspension following a hearing with a principal shall have the right to appeal the principal's decision to the superintendent. The student or parent shall file a notice of appeal with the superintendent within the time period noted above. See Principal's Hearing. Suspension of more than 10 days. If the appeal is not timely filed, the superintendent may deny the appeal and may allow the appeal in his or her discretion for good cause. The superintendent shall hold the hearing within three school days of the student's request unless the student or parent requests an extension of up to seven additional calendar days, in which case the superintendent shall grant the extension. The superintendent shall make a good faith effort to include the parent in the hearing. The superintendent shall be presumed to have made a good faith effort if he or she has made efforts to find a day and time for the hearing that would allow the parent and the superintendent to participate. The superintendent shall send written notice to the parent of the date, time, and location of the hearing. The superintendent shall conduct a hearing to determine whether the student committed the disciplinary offense of which the student is accused, and if so, what the consequence shall be. The superintendent shall arrange for an audio recording of the hearing, a copy of which shall be provided to the student or parent upon request. The superintendent shall inform all participants before the hearing that an audio record will be made of the hearing and a copy will be provided to the student and parent upon request. The student shall have all the rights afforded the student at the principal's hearing for long suspension. Superintendent shall issue a written decision within five calendar days of the hearing which meets the requirements of law and regulation. If the superintendent determines that the student committed the disciplinary offense, the superintendent may impose the same or a lesser consequence than the principal, but shall not impose a suspension greater than the imposed, that imposed by the principal's decision. The decision of the superintendent shall be the final decision of the school district with regard to the suspension.
Do you want me to take over?
Do you want to?
I don't mind, you've been reading like a trooper. I rested. Expulsion. Expulsion is defined as the removal of a student from school for more than 90 school days indefinitely or permanently as allowed by law for possession of a dangerous weapon, possession of a controlled substance, assault on a member of the educational staff... weapon, possession of a controlled substance, assault on a member of the educational staff, or a felony charge or felony delinquency complaint or conviction, or adjudication or admission of guilt with respect to such felony, if a principal determines that the student's continued presence in school would have a substantial detrimental effect on the general welfare of the school. Any student alleged to have committed one of these acts shall be afforded the same due process rights as for a long-term suspension. Any student expelled from school for such an offense shall be afforded an opportunity to receive educational services and make academic progress. Academic progress. Any student who is suspended or expelled shall have the opportunity to earn credits, make up assignments, tests, papers, and other schoolwork as needed to make academic progress during the period of his/her removal from the classroom or school. The principal shall inform the student and parent of this opportunity in writing, in English and in the primary language of the home, when such suspension or expulsion is imposed. Any student who is expelled or suspended from school for more than ten consecutive days, whether in school or out of school, shall have an opportunity to receive education services and make academic progress toward meeting state and local requirements through the school-wide education service plan. The principal shall develop a school-wide education service plan describing the education services that the school district will make available to students who are expelled or suspended from school for more than ten consecutive days. The plan shall include the process for notifying such students and their parents of the services and arranging such services. Education services shall be based on and be provided in a manner consistent with the academic standards and curriculum frameworks established for all students under the law. The principal shall notify the parent and student of the opportunity to receive education services at the time the student is expelled or placed on long-term suspension. Notice shall be provided in English and in the primary language spoken in the student's home if other than English, or other means of communication where appropriate. The notice shall include a list of the specific education services that are available to the student and contact information for a school district staff member who can provide more detailed information. For each student expelled or suspended from school for more than ten consecutive days, whether in school or out of school, the school district shall document the student's enrollment in education services. For data reporting purposes, the school shall track and report attendance, academic progress, and such other data as directed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
The "in school" popped out at me again.
Oh.
Do we, ten consecutive days, whether in school or out of school?
You know, we should take that out. That's another good catch. There's so many words in here.
I know. All right, so it should read, "for more than ten days."
Ten consecutive days. That whole "whether in school or out of school."
That's in the top, full paragraph, the first full paragraph at the top of that page as well.
Yes.
We should strike.
You know what, you're right.
Right, right.
Good catch, Debbie.
So, ten days, so.
That's right.
We don't need that.
Nope. Both those phrases, that is a good catch.
We have a good policy subcommittee. I'm just making a sidebar conversation.
I was gonna make that comment.
All right, we're almost done. Reporting. The school district shall collect and annually report data to the DESE regarding in-school suspensions. Well, I guess we could take that out, too. Regarding, regarding short and long-term suspensions, take out in-school suspensions. Short and long-term suspensions, expulsions, emergency removals, access to education services, and other, such other information as may be required by the DESE. The principal of each school shall periodically review discipline data by selected student populations, including but not limited to race and ethnicity, gender, socioeconomic status, English, language, learner status, and student with a disability status in accordance with law and regulation. Legal references, MGL 7137H.
Oh, here we go.
7137H and a half, 7137H and three quarters, Mass General Law's 7621, and 603 CMR 53 et al.
Good job. So the law is really trying to protect the student and make sure that students have an opportunity for education, just in general. Think about all three of these policies.
In general, yes.
It seems like someone is, some ones are concerned that even when a student runs into these situations, that they will have an opportunity for...
Even though they've made a bad choice, for some reason, that they still have opportunity to complete their education.
That's the sense I get, that that's what...
That's the premise.
Well, and the absence policy would, you know, support that as well. We want students in school and partaking in educational services.
That's definitely the background to it. I think the concern is the rights of one student for continuing to make academic progress could potentially affect the general population of students. And if, and how do we provide that without jeopardizing other students?
I agree.
How do we provide it without incurring a lot of, oh, a lot already? How do we, how do we accept that responsibility without financial obligations that would affect the general education program for the majority of students? There's a lot of except-for's after the philosophical underpinnings, which no one could disagree with yet. At what point? So at no point does a student lose their right to education, but if you think about it outside of our little community of Foxborough, that's a lot.
Oh, yeah. Well, I couldn't help but think about other districts where these issues may be more prevalent and what that would mean.
And if there's violence or threat involved, who's gonna educate that student and how? Who's gonna monitor that student? Who's gonna be accountable for that? There's a lot to it that is of concern. But it's not the law.
Well, just following up on your comments, Deb, and the fact that the superintendents have concern over some of this, that does not, that does not stop us from needing to vote this in after a second reading.
Not at all.
And your comments would reflect potentially a further change that might then get added in again.
I mean, we definitely need to follow the law and will. I think it's the execution of it and what it looks like on a day-to-day basis and what if a student, you know, is expelled at a younger age, how many years and what does that responsibility look like? I think that's a legitimate, practical concern, along with how do you ensure that someone who cannot come into the school environment any longer for the sake of the greater good, how does that child progress academically and who is actually gonna monitor that and provide the instruction? I think is, there's a lot of questions about what it's actually gonna look like over time. But I don't think that, you're right, there's no question about following the law.
No, and, you know, through all of this discussion and at the School Committee Convention on the Cape, I mean, if we have somebody who has pushed the limit so that they actually are in prison, Foxborough High School is, you know, we're responsible for the education of that person under those confines.
So that's one of our questions. So if they're under Department of Youth Services, who used to be responsible financially for those kids, are we now? We haven't gotten the answer to that yet. And let's just take the kids in woodworking and home repair that we saw tonight. So if a student was enrolled in that course, for example, and we're expected to provide educational services outside of the school, what does that look like? And how could we possibly do that? So there's a lot of questions about the practical application of the rollout of these responsibilities, rightly so. And I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, as we saw at the School Committee Conference. There's a lot of unanswered questions, both at the policy level, about what you're gonna be responsible for should this situation arise. And there certainly is a lot of concern over the practical application of it at my level.
And, you know, if, say hypothetically, there is a student from Foxborough High School who is on an IE plan.
IEP.
IEP plan, the, and they want a meeting, and in that, the people from Foxborough are required to go.
Well, there, that's a whole other set of regulations.
I know, that's a whole, but I just, I was just unaware to the extent of which the law has delved into some of these things.
Those things haven't changed. Those things actually don't change. Students with IEPs, that this law does not change anything for them because they have a right to educational services under that IEP. So this law actually, it doesn't really enhance, they already guaranteed the right to continued education. So not much really changes for students on IEPs because we always had a higher level of accountability for those students. This is for students without identified disabilities who, you know, can't come to school for those reasons. So we shall see.
When they talk about an education services plan, that would be tailored to that particular circumstance?
Well, we have to do some work on what, what can we offer and how can we offer it and come up with, I'll call it a menu for now, of what we can do here in our community and what we're willing to, what we can actually do. We don't have access to some other things that you might in a more urban area. So we'll, we'll see what, what's on our menu and then when a student needs educational services, we'll figure out what's best for that. But our menu is going to be smaller, quite honestly, in some places, so...
But you do have to come up with that, it looks like, based on this.
We do. And we have no idea of what it's gonna cost us over time.
I think your virtual education idea is a good one.
It is, but that's also, we'd have to, our seats are full, so that's a cost per student, per class. So one student could be a budget buster.
I understand the concern.
Well, for now, our policies adhere to the law, follow the law as it stands today. So we're doing what we can do. And hopefully, with the help of our school resource officer, we'll keep our students from suspensions and expulsions and make them good productive citizens.
Well, he's pretty good, but I don't think he's magic.
Well, I'm hopeful, Deb, I'm hopeful.
Well, that was a great first reading.
Yeah.
And I do sincerely agree with what Debbie whispered over midway through, which is we have a good policy subcommittee.
We do.
And seriously, I mean, if you think about the importance of, I mean, this is how we're gonna run our schools, and you guys do a very nice job, not only complying with the required changes, but also thinking it through. You know, I think, you know, the problem is you do this job too well. I've told you that before. But, but it's important. It's important.
They're very good. They really are very good.
So we have a second reading and a vote next meeting?
I already have a recommendation for the second reading, you know.
Wave part of it?
You can wave the second reading.
Steve may wanna hear it.
I was gonna say, I fear that our two absent members are gonna wanna hear it.
Katie's probably watching, Steve, well...
I'm going to make a prediction that people will be in favor of waiving the reading.
Yeah, we'll see.
Well, he could, Steve can look at the DVD.
Well, I suspect we'll wave it as well. Okay, other matters.
I have one that I would like to mention.
Oh, goody. I'll hold up the Vanna White.
That's exactly what I am going to mention. We were provided, under informational matters, I want the entire public to know that there is an AP honor roll, which I don't think people are aware of. And I'm going to take this opportunity to give a shout-out to all of our excellent teachers who provide this opportunity for learning for our students. So, Foxborough Public School District has been named to the Fifth Annual AP Honor Roll for Expanding Opportunity and Improving Performance of Advanced Placement Studies. And I want to say that the letter says your district is one of 547 districts, school districts in the U.S. and Canada, that our leaders in making access to and success in AP courses, a priority. So bravo for Foxborough once again.
And I think it goes back to a lot of levels. Obviously, our great teachers here, they're completely the factor that makes the difference.
A shout-out to the teachers.
But it's also at this level with the addition, your support, the addition of a few more AP courses over the last few years and, as you saw at the Baselines and Benchmarks Report that Amy did with our department heads and our guidance director and Diana Myers-Packler, that because we've offered more AP courses, we have more kids participating than ever before. And we've been able to maintain our average AP score of three or better on that five-point scale, even as the numbers increase by the dozens of kids participating. And that is what really landed us on this fifth college board advanced placement honor roll. So that's a real good news item, is that we've not only increased the participation, but we're able to maintain that standard. So, so the...
You know, the cynic, the cynic in me read that and immediately thought, that's just propaganda for the college board. But then I thought, if you think about the number of school districts in the country and Canada, there's far more than 547.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, yes, but there are thousands, but these are the only ones that are participating.
I remember that when this came out last year, the Fourth Annual, Diana Myers-Packler and I had a discussion, like, why weren't we on there? Because we thought we had increased last year. We thought our data has been showing that we've increased, but evidently it just didn't reach a threshold of the data that they collect. But we knew we were on track because we had seen our data rising. So I'm happy that we're on it. We don't certainly do all the press releases that they send us, that you can see. They send us all kinds of things. We don't do that.
That's probably what struck my eye.
Yeah, so we're not going to go into that. But I do think it's well worth noting that, according to the data that the college board collects, we certainly have increased the participation and at the same time...
And they're aware.
Have maintained our student scoring pretty well on that for college.
Well, it said, it said, since 2012, Foxborough Public Schools has increased the number of students participating in AP while improving the number of students earning AP exam scores of three or higher.
Right.
And it is, Foxborough Public Schools is committed to expanding the availability of AP courses among prepared and motivated students of all backgrounds.
So I think we're proud of it, but we don't wanna make too big of a deal of it because it's what we do.
Well, it is what we do, but this is, I'm making factual statements now. I think people should be aware of the fact.
I totally agree.
In 2014, more than 3,800 colleges and universities around the world received AP scores for college credit, advanced placement, and/or consideration in the admission process, with many colleges and universities in the United States offering credit in one or more subjects for qualifying AP scores.
May I mention two more good news items?
Please do.
And then two factual items, if you don't mind, Mr. Gardner. So, good news items, as of today, the Boston Globe All Scholastics are naming our very own Pat Nash as Division III Boys Soccer Coach of the Year.
Oh, great.
Many congratulations to Coach Nash, very well deserved.
Congratulations, Coach.
Looking forward, you'll be seeing him in January. He's coming with our engineering students in January.
For which coaching?
Soccer. Soccer. So that is, that was today's wonderful news of the day, very well deserved.
Awesome.
And if you're, the other good news, Foxborough Drama Club presented a dollhouse a couple of weeks ago. I attended, I thought it was excellent, and they're going to enter that as a competitive entry into the drama competition, the drama festival, in, I think it's February. But I thought the kids did a wonderful job and learned a lot about the craft, and I'm just really happy for them. I thought they really made a good team effort. And congratulations to all of those who were involved, including our advisors. Factual information, the superintendent's evening coffee in December, I sent out an email today. I've changed it from December 16th to the 9th, which is next Tuesday, just to make sure I don't interfere with a religious holiday, which I had to double-check. So it's next, it's next Tuesday, December 9th, in the evening, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Boyden Public Library, in the lodger of the meeting rooms in the community room. So it's, any community members or parents are welcome to attend. And last but not least, we had an opportunity to meet with all the boosters last week, Mr. Yukner and I, with the athletic director, Caitlin, actually, both of our athletic directors. And we presented them with a draft of new booster guidelines, and we went over that with them, and they had some input and feedback. So we've provided a copy of that first draft to you here in the packet. But we really have great boosters, as you saw tonight. We just have wonderfully supportive booster clubs for athletics here, and this is no exception. Our meeting went very well, and we feel that we had an obligation to provide them with guidelines that are helpful to them and that also guarantee them what we're going to provide and that, provide them with some operational guidelines. They are a separate organization, but because we are tied to our booster clubs and they do so much for our schools, we wanted to make sure we had an agreement about how we wanted business to be conducted. wanted business to be conducted, rather than them wondering about it or always having to ask, and that was a very productive meeting, and we'll be working on another initiative together.
I know that's a topic, you know, we've spoken about before, and I thought the brochure is very nice. And is that, does that include, then, the most current input from them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we didn't really make any substantive changes, but we had a great discussion about all of these sections, and so, you know, a lot of compliments to Sean Mackin, our interim athletic director, and Caitlin Brown, our permanent athletic director, um, for working with us to create this, so. Any added thoughts, Bill? About boosters? No? I think it just helps provide some guidelines.
Yeah, I think it really, it puts them all on the same playing field, and it was kind of interesting, because obviously they don't have too many opportunities to all sit down together like that, uh, and they really found out that they were, they were all doing things a little bit differently, so I think now we can at least be consistent with how we program this out for all the students, so. That must have been an interesting meeting.
Well, this is the second one, we had one in the spring and one in the fall, and every time they say, this is really good to meet, so we're gonna try to meet probably twice a year.
That's great.
Um, because it really is productive, we learn a lot from them about what they're doing and what they're trying to do, and, and then we find ways we can be helpful to them as well, so it's, it's really just a great, um, two-way communication. And I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, but that's all I have under other matters.
It was delicious.
Tina, hey?
I, I wanted to congratulate the organizers of the B I.T. auction. I saw Debbie and Amy there, and Bruce was there. It was fabulous, they did a wonderful, wonderful job. It was, I, you know, as good as it ever is, they changed it over to an, uh, a smartphone bidding format, which I thought worked great, I won a couple wonderful things, and it was excellent. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to the PTOs for all their hard work, so much work.
It was a great event.
So much effort, it was a great event. They did a great, great job. So, and I wanted to second what Debbie said about a doll's house, I had the opportunity to go on Saturday afternoon, and it was a great production, they, the kids did a wonderful job, I cannot wait to see how they do in the, um, uh, drama competition, I think that's great.
I'm sure they'll do, I'm sure they'll do.
They will have to be cutting.
I'm sorry?
They, they won't do the full length.
Well, I don't know that. I just know that our advisors want them to have that experience of competitive drama, um, festival, so it'll be a great experience, regardless of how they do, I think it's, any child, any student interested in theater ought to have that experience, so we're just happy that we're gonna be able to provide that, because we haven't been doing that.
And our middle school students have a play going on this weekend, so good luck to them.
What's that, a play or a musical? A play?
It's a play, it's a drama, and I can't remember the title right now.
I do know, Ms. Hathaway and Mr. Gill's...
Yes, Ms. Hathaway and Mr. Gill's drama play.
You remember last year, Ms. Hathaway came and they had entered the competition with it as well, and they had done second place, so this is their fall production, that they'll enter in, in the competition as well.
And I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, but Friday night and Saturday, they have performances.
Look it up on the school calendar, please, people.
Or on the new message board, it's probably, oh, I don't know if it's on the message board or not.
It's the middle school.
Yeah, but Bill, Bill helped us replace that board as well, the summer sign, letter sign. Anyway, anything else, Deanna?
Amy, I'm good.
Hi there.
Hi. I just wanted to, um, let you know that at the end of this week, we'll be sending home a parent letter for the student email rollout.
I've been asking about that.
Yeah, so, um, it will go out in hard copy, as well as going out digitally to all parents, and within that letter also will be a couple of links to some resources. One of them is the Federal Trade Commission, and it is a guideline of how to talk with your students, your children, about being online. This information will also be part of the lessons that, um, Ms. Julia Greenstein, our technology integration specialist for secondary, she's going to start next week with all of eighth grade and high school, and the lessons really are going to focus at the eighth-grade level on with responsive, with online responsibility, it really is a great, you know, responsibility as far as having the power there, um, at their fingertips. It's in addition to all of the internet safety and digital citizenship that we already do in classrooms, but really focusing on the positive aspect of a digital footprint and cyberbullying at eighth grade, and then moving to the high school, and again, the positive aspect of that digital footprint, and really what is your brand? So it's, it's, we talk about if you Google yourself, what comes up, but you want to have the positive things that are there, so really speaking to, what is your brand? What do you want to bubble up? Because there's a lot of really positive things, um, to come up there, and then, um, through the high school warrior huddles, we'll be passing these pamphlets out with students, where they'll be discussing these, these are really geared for students, with seventh and eighth graders as well, and then in January, we will roll out grades five, six, and seven with their email accounts. So it's going to be the lesson on the digital citizenship, the positive digital footprints, the cyberbullying, in addition to what we already do with our technology skills curriculum, but then also focusing with those parent resources that are there, and Julia will be joining us at the December fifteenth meeting to talk about how it went. Have you, have an opportunity to meet her, we've talked a lot about her and the work that she and Darlene have been doing.
Good.
And, um, kind of how the rollout went for eighth through twelfth grade, and then we'll continue in January.
Great.
Amy, is parent technology night scheduled yet?
The date is not scheduled, that's actually on our agenda for Monday for the Technology Steering Committee. We had, um, as you can remember, the snow date that kind of fell in, so that's kind of our conversation, is do we plan it again in the middle of the winter?
Yeah.
Because by having that alternate date, our attendance was not as great.
It's always a good night.
After Monday, we should have a date.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Nice to hear from you tonight.
Yeah.
You and I were quiet, oh.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion.
As long as Mr. Yukna doesn't have anything.
No, we didn't even give him a chance, did we?
Nothing.
Oh, we're gonna hear from him lots in January. We'll be hearing from Mr. Yukna lots in January.
All right.
All for.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Mrs. Vannelli, I won't be up next.